Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
I've received some complaints from Commissioner Kalo, we're not on time again, and he's got his yardstick here, so would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the June 9th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. As you can see, we're having a little fun here. We have a jar for donations for Jim's candy. We have a candy hat here with candy from Joyce Parks, and we have a dog with Commissioner Kalo this morning.
One of the 19 dogs we have available at our dog kennel, this is a mixed German Shepherd, approximately one-year-old. He was found in La Grange near Factory Street, I believe, and we're going to give him an extended stay. Great personality, looks like he's a lot of fun, great color, and I think I'm gonna name my dog this week with everything going on in the papers, let's call him Snickers. So we'll give you a couple of weeks, come pick up our dog, we're, it looks like we're batting a thousand. Our new dog warden told us, a gentleman called last night, he got there after the kennel was closed, but he saw Joey, the dog from last week, on the Internet that we're broadcasting now, and he's coming into Adopt a Dog Day, so the Commissioners are still batting a thousand, so come in and adopt Snickers too.
Beautiful dog. Having a little too much fun today. I thought for today, I've taken from the Daily Guide post, it says courtesy is kindness, let me do as I would have done unto me. Ma'am clerk?
At 10:15, there will be a public hearing on the proposed annexation. Is it on now?
No. Well, you were supposed to turn it on, I thought.
Okay, 10:15, public hearing on the proposed annexation of 13.45, 48 acres from New Rush Township to the city of Elaria Overland, sorry. Attorney James N. Taylor is the agent. Under Resolution Number 1, approving the enterprise zone tax abatement agreement between the city of Avon Lake, Ohio, and Perry Fiberglass Products, Inc., which calls for a total investment of $700,000 for a 10,000-foot expansion of its facility in Avon Lake, Ohio, and the creation of 15 new full-time jobs. This abatement will be for 10 years on personal and real property at 75% in years 1 through 5, and 50% in years 6 through 10.
Rebecca Jones?
Rebecca Jones, Lorraine County Community Development. Thank you, Commissioners. This project is for an expansion project with Perry Fiberglass. You may recall Commissioner Blair that in December of '04, we approved a $200,000 revolving loan fund for this company. They will be investing $535,000 in the 10,000-square-foot expansion, $135,000 for purchase of machinery and equipment, furniture and fixtures, and an additional $30,000 in new inventory. They will be creating 15 new full-time positions, and they will be retaining the 20 jobs that they currently have. New payroll is estimated to be $490,000, which is approximately $33,000 per job. The project completion date is November of '05. The schools have been properly notified. The city of Avon Lake has approved this by ordinance, and Jerry Innes has reviewed and approved this abatement as to form. Rob Burner, Mayor of Avon Lake, is here, and I'd like to turn the microphone over to Mayor Burner at this time.
Good morning, Mayor Burner.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's always a pleasure to stand before this body and see your good humor. Maybe some of that can spill over into our council chambers. Again, the abatement for Perry Fiberglass is before you. They are a good corporate citizen, they moved into Avon Lake about three years ago, and their business has continuously grown since moving to Avon Lake. They're almost doubling their size of their facilities in Avon Lake. Tom, who's the CEO, and Chad Pulliam are both residents of the city of Avon Lake, and we will be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have with respect to the abatement at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Any questions, my fellow Commissioners?
Good news, though, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, and thank you, both Mayor and Rebecca, I'll move for approval as outlined.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners, we do appreciate your support.
We appreciate your good work.
Number 2, approve an amendment to the enterprise zone agreement between the village of La Grange and Micron Manufacturing, Inc. The amendment will reflect the decrease in personal property investment from $6,535,000 to $3 million, and extending the project completion date of December 31, 2004, and an abatement expiration date of December 31, 2014.
Rebecca, are you going to report on this again?
Thank you, Commissioners. This abatement was discussed during the Tax Incentive Review Council in February. The company had intended initially to invest $6.5 million in new machinery and equipment. They did find that they were able to purchase used machinery and equipment in the amount of $3 million, and so they asked for an amendment to the abatement to reduce the amount of personal property investment. And they also asked if we would extend the project completion date from 12/31/03 to 12/31/04. This abatement was originally entered into in November of 2000. The other terms of the abatement will remain the same, it will be at 75% for 10 years. They promised to create 22 jobs, and the company has in fact created the 22 jobs. The schools have been notified, and Jerry Innes has reviewed the documentation. The village did pass an ordinance on May 26 of '05 approving this amendment. Unfortunately, Mayor Strauss from the village of La Grange was not able to be here this morning, he had a conflict in his schedule, but Mark Zupan, the president of Micron Manufacturing, is here. If you have any questions, perhaps Mr. Zupan could answer some of those for you.
Mr. Zupan, do you have any comments that you'd like to offer to us? Would you come to the microphone, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The comments I would like to make regarding the reduction, because it is sizable, is part of that also was the slowdown in manufacturing in general. Some of the contracts we're expecting, that we actually had orders for, were canceled due to financial hardships that Ford and GM were having. They had cut back on their investments with the Tier Ones, who are our customers, and therefore, some of the jobs did not materialize, the products, I should say. We did wind up through several twists and turns that we weren't anticipating, and we did create the jobs after all. But we wound up doing so with some much less expensive equipment.
Questions for Mr. Zupan? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Number 3, Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated summary for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Commissioners, I would like to have an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today. I have a couple of personal action sheets, potential hires from Job and Family Services that were sent over, and I'd like to review them with you and discuss your position on them. And I would also bring you up to date on the conciliation that occurred in the sheriff's contract earlier in the week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes, away the reading is same from May 5th and 26, 2005?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, approve various addendums to Help Me Grow fiscal year '05 contracts between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, administrative agent for Lorraine County Children and Families Council for the fiscal year '05 Help Me Grow program with various vendors. Said addendums reflect an increase or decrease of various award amounts based upon the grant received. This action is necessary to rebalance awards to maximize expenditures of available funds before the close of fiscal year '05.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Approve various contracts for the help fiscal year '06 Help Me Grow program effective July 1, 2005 through June 30, 2006 as follows. 1 Catholic Charity Service Corp., $284,960.75. Children's Development Center, $38,980.68. Elaria City Department of Health, $375,715.31. Lorraine City Health Department, $344,310.10. MRDD, $51,730.54. And Neighborhood House Association, Lorraine County, $190,714.35.
Juan, do you have any comments that you would like to make on these awards?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to make some comments regarding fiscal year '06. As you all are aware, this is approximately our seventh year that we're going into the Help Me Grow program. Each year, we continue to exceed the state mandated quota, criterion that's set by the state in terms of enrollment figures, both in terms of the at-risk population, also the population with diagnosed disabilities. The contracts that you have before you this morning are actually a reduction from last year, from our current '05. We've reduced the number of contracts in '06 from 13 to the 6 that are before you. This is primarily due to a recommendation by the state when we had a visit several weeks ago indicating that more of our dollars should be put towards service coordination. These contracts, aside from MRDD and the Children's Developmental Center, are for service coordination services from these agencies. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Juan. Does the Board have any questions?
Great program.
Also move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve an interim contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Advance Computer Connections, Inc. in Norwalk, Ohio, in the amount not to exceed $18,200 for computer programming and training project for the provision of access data programming services. This contract is effective July 1, 2005 through June 30, 2006, to be paid from account 205010903450101 Contract Services.
I'll so move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
amend Resolution 04-404, adopted June 3, 2004, approving an intern to purchase a service contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency for the 2005 WEA program and services. Said amendment will increase contract to $3,434,533 to $3,877,440, an increase of $442,900-some.
Do you have anything to say, Mr. Cordes?
No, just glad we have more money for our dislocated workers, that's really what it's all about, providing more program money to better serve people, it's always nice.
It's your turn.
Yes, Mr. Copler. It's always nice to have additional resources for our dislocated workers, so that's what the increase represents, and we'll be able to provide more services through the one-stop. So I would encourage you to agree with this. Thank you.
Also move.
A second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Approve an intern to various transportation agreements on behalf of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, effective July 1, 2005 through June 30, 2006, to be paid from 205010903450127. 1 Diversified Transportation Services Toledo will handle the medical transportation, which cannot be scheduled through LCT. The amount of the contract is $150,000 and can be renewed for one additional year for the same terms. Life Care Ambulance, Inc., Elaria, in the amount of $20,000, and this is the one-year renewal allowed in the original contract. And C. Lorraine County Transit Lorraine, in the amount of $30,000, with new rates as $19.50 per one-way trip, $15 per no-show, including ADA-certified clients and $1 per authorized extra family member. Transportation services are for clients in need of diagnostic and preventative medical treatments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Under A, we have Toledo, Ohio, isn't there anyone local that could handle that medical transportation?
Well, there were some issues with the bids, and I did have extensive dialogue with one local firm. Under the bidding requirements, they had to have proper insurances in place to be able to have a qualifying bid, and they didn't have the insurances in place to have the, to be able to be a qualified bid. One of these chicken and egg things going back and forth. Diversified Transportation has been here before, they're, I believe they're the incumbent right now, and they've provided pretty good services. Obviously, I'd love to be doing business with local firms, I'm sure the Board would too, but as aggravating it is, sometimes it costs a little money to be able to prepare the bid and try to achieve the outcome, and maybe next year, we can work a bit more cooperatively with the locals. I want to really look into whether they actually have to have that insurance at the time of the bid, or whether we can allow them to procure it after they make the bid. I don't have a firm answer on that, and that may be a barrier to allowing locals to penetrate the market, and I want to look at this next year and see if that's an artificial barrier or a real one. If it's artificial, maybe we need to tear it down and try to keep those dollars here. But I would recommend that we go forward now based upon our needs, and I'll certainly assure you that we'll look at that very diligently next year.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Approve an intern to purchase a service agreement between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Elaria City Health Department for a client advocacy outreach worker for state fiscal year '06, effective July 1, 2005 through June 30, 2006, in the amount not to exceed $43,000. Authorized Director of Job and Families to execute on behalf of the Board with prosecutors as proposed to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the Solid Waste, approve the 2005 Close the Loop grants in the amount not to exceed $137,601.81 to be paid from account 202015302490826. There were 17 communities that applied to purchase products made from recycled materials, and they are required to match 50% to townships of Amherst, Carlisle, Columbia, Eaton, Grafton, Huntington, La Grange, Penfield, Rochester, and Wellington, and the villages of La Grange, Rochester, and Wellington, and the cities of Avon, Elaria, Lorraine, North Bridgeville, and Sheffield Lake applied.
Dan, do you have any further comments on this?
Of course. Any chance he gets.
Morning, Commissioners. Dan Vilman, I'm Solid Waste Director for the Commissioners. This is a grant that we give out every year. It's a separate grant from the community grant or the Commissioners' grant, as we know. It's limited to $10,000 per community, and we ask them to come up with different items that they may purchase. It's called the Close the Loop, to show people that materials that we recycle can get put into usable products, recycled products. We have 17 communities this year that are participating, and like to see all of them participate, but it does limit, the $10,000 does limit how many we can actually bring into the program. But this year, some of the items that they're requesting, which are, a couple of them are kind of unusual, we've never done before, like, I don't think we ever had roofing shingles on our Close the Loop program, which is made out of recycled plastic and rubber. Some bleachers, they're going to be buying some fences, drainage pipe. We have a company that just started putting out recycled pipe for drainage, which is the only time I've ever heard of that, and they came around and showed us the product, so we agreed to fund some of that. Lighting fixtures, signs, signage for some of their parks. Probably the most unusual item is tombstones, made out of recycled plastic, and that's going to be done by Grafton Township. They're finding ways to buy recycled products, and that's what this grant is all about. I would recommend that you approve the request.
Thank you, Dan, I like the tombstone one.
Yeah, there was a lot of different things. I had a question about the matches, they weren't like, they were all over the place, as far as the man.
Right, most all of them will be a higher match, we require a 50% match, but doesn't mean, like, if they have a $50,000 project, they're going to have a match of $40,000, we're going to give them the $10,000.
Okay.
So they're getting $10,000.
Because we have a limit of $10,000.
That's our limit, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
I'll move for approval. Thank you, Dan.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, request county honor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.03, certified to the Board of Commissioners, the total current tax valuation of Lorraine County and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by 1.5 mil replacement levy for the purpose of the Lorraine County Children's Services for a year, five-year period, and placed on November 2005 ballot.
This is required in the course of putting an issue on the ballot, so it's the first step. I'll so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
County Administrator?
Good morning, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Oh, wow. He must have gotten sick from eating all that candy.
Mr. and Mrs. Assistant County Prosecutor?
Oh, he changed his.
You know, I did want to be briefed, now I kind of stepped on my own issue here. I have to get a resolution from the Commissioners on the Board of Elections to proceed with the construction out there. So it's not a discussion point, it's actually, I didn't make it to the agenda. Let me pass that up to you, sorry, Jerry. So you thought we were going to get away with it this morning?
Yeah, we thought we were home free for a few minutes.
Would you pass that to the clerk and ask her to read that? I'd like to get underway with selecting an architect for the Board of Elections renovation. We have some issues with the HAVA program and security, and we need to do some structural renovations out there. Not significant structural renovations, but to security issues to support the approval that we did just last week on cameras and things like that. Hopefully, this will be the last phase of working on that building to get it where it needs to be for the next 10 or 15, 20 years. We took a couple of local quotes, and RWL was the lowest quote for us, and I would encourage the Board to allow us to move forward so that we can support the Board of Elections and get this thing done in a timely fashion, and hopefully before the November elections.
Well, I know the concern, Jim, is also with the new equipment company, they really want to make sure that's secure and no tampering, so there's going to be a lot of concerns with the new touchscreen computers and such. So in meetings with some of the Board members, that was probably their main focus, to make sure there's no guys of improprieties in this year's elections, so.
It is, Commissioner, and, you know, we've been working on this for a while. If I didn't think it was absolutely necessary, I wouldn't be encouraging you to fund these renovations, but I think it needs to be done, and I appreciate your support, and I know you've talked to the Board of Elections people, and I'm sorry this wasn't on our regular agenda, I just didn't get it there this week, and it was, I was remiss in doing that, and I would request your support to move forward. Thank you.
Would you read it?
Approve an interim agreement with RWL Architects in Elaria to perform architectural services for the renovations of Lorraine County Board of Elections, in the amount not to exceed $11,750 plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $2,500. The funds are available from account 001010201450124, Capital Improvements Professional Services.
What does his note say on the front?
It says estimated cost of construction is $90,000 plus contingency.
Okay. Also move.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye. I apologize now, and I would now yield to the county prosecutor.
Well, before he talks, we're still on the Board of Elections, I want to thank Dennis Shaver publicly for finally getting the flagpole erected at that site, but I think we're still absent a flag.
Well, what is a flagpole without a flag?
Well, yes, so.
It's just merely a pole.
Right, so who should be putting the flag up?
I will attend to that at the conclusion of our regular meeting today.
Are you going to go out and put it up, or?
You know, Ira Hayes raised the flag, I guess I could too, so I will have that taken care of.
Unless it's been up since I've been there.
Well, we'll probably provide the flag, and I'm sure the Board of Elections people will be agreeable to go out and make sure it's flown. If we get the right flag and we have the right lighting out there, we can leave it flying.
I don't think you're required to light it anymore.
Yeah, I heard that, but I still don't, I still don't like that.
Well, but I'd really like to see a flag there, it's been a long time, I've been waiting for it.
And I'd like to see it lit.
Me too.
Well, that's fine, but I'd still like to see the flag. You want to light it, that's fine, but I want to see a flag.
We're going to add that other electrical stuff going on in the county.
We will. That's good, Commissioner. What color Art Deco light would you like? The, I will certainly make sure that your request is accomplished before the close of business today, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Now, Jerry, you get to talk.
I've completed my report on the candy issue. Couple side issues, I spoke with Steven Spielberg this morning, and he's agreed to produce the movie.
I missed it.
Spielberg, who's asked for the rights to produce the candy.
Oh, 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 okay, I'm sorry, Miss.
We've reached one snag, we can't decide whether Tom Cruise or Brad Pitt should play my part.
Oh, yeah.
I don't understand what it's so funny about. We have signed Russell Crowe to be responsible for throwing the candy out. He's, I understand, in his defense on the phone-throwing trial, he's going to claim he was practicing for the role. We have ruled from the prosecutor's office that the expenditure was lawful. We have noted that in various community events, most of the political government entities around the county participate in things like the parades, the county fair, and the festivals, that they make other food items available, such as coffee, donuts, cookies. Obviously, we have coffee available out there. So we do think the participation in community events is a legitimate action for promoting the county. We have noted that we think this kind of expenditure should be kept at a minimum, and because of this particular thing being somewhat tenuous in its connection, that the Commissioners maybe want to reexamine the practice in the future.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Commissioners' report?
Is he done?
Oh, I think so.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
I, I, I assumed he was standing. I don't know, you wanna, you wanna talk some more?
Well, we do, Teresa does have a copy of the written opinion, and it will be available.
Who was, uh, who's pointing the Commissioner's?
Never mind.
Commissioner Kikowski?
I don't have a report today, thank you.
Just been a week, bridges, baseball, and candy gate. What a great week.
Uh, I want to publicly thank Huntington Township Trustee Mary Beth Derakito for calling, uh, my home on Sunday to let me know, uh, what Mayor Fulton was doing with respect to the local government fund issue. And I want to state publicly that I'm disappointed in the mayor for his lack of communication. He had no problem in requesting funds from the Commissioners, but he certainly had a problem with letting us know what he was doing with respect to the local government fund issue. Um, and I'd like to further state that, uh, Jim Sloan is in the audience from the Community Impact Program, and they're requesting something like sixty or sixty-five thousand dollars from the Board of Commissioners to develop and help youth in the county. And they can match that money two or threefold, and I think that would be a much better expensive monies, um, than just lighting the bridge in the city of Lorraine, that I think is probably a great idea, but guess what? We have to have priorities sometimes. Um, those are my editorial comments this morning.
For correspondence?
I'll move the reading, be waved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Plaugh?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
About seven minutes before we have to hold a timely public hearing, because, uh, Mr. Taylor has places to be. Shirley, you wanna speak first?
Well...
Uh, we, we don't want anybody in the audience to think that we were having a secret meeting up here with you.
My comments really are now moot, shall we say, because, uh, since I'm an advocate of, uh, dissension and controversy, I'd opened meetings, but over more substantive matters than candy money. I'd prepared the statement before we had the legal rendering. Uh, it, it is important that we, um, uh, spend public money, what we spend public money for and how we dispense it, so that we can move to more substantive matters. I was going to offer, and I will still offer, to pay for the candy, uh, so that, as a gift. If Mr. Ennis says that it's okay for me to do so, although I sometimes disagree with his legal opinions, I also publicly state that I expect and have not accepted any gratuities or privileges in re, in return for this offer. So, I, I will, I will do it even though it apparently isn't legally necessary anymore. You'll accept it.
Thank you very much, Shirley. Elizabeth? You know, there are some problems that go along with eating too much candy, besides tooth decay.
Elizabeth Rummings Oberlin, I, I would just like a little bit of, of more information or clarification about item seventeen. Um, especially, say, A, uh, the Toledo Company presumably has a base here in Alaria. Surely, it's not sending a bus from Toledo or a car from Toledo for whatever it's doing?
Actually, uh, they don't just use, uh, larger vehicles, they also have, um, taxi-type vehicles. In fact, uh, it's, uh, coincidental, but I was, um, at a stoplight this morning on Little, Northridge Road, and I was sitting right next to one of them, and I was just looking over it because it was a very clean and newer vehicle, uh, and I was pleased with that because we have a contract with them. They do have, they do have vehicles here, they do not just drive in from Toledo, so they do have a presence here in Lorraine County. They're just not a Lorraine County-based company, and, again, we, this board, uh, has been very supportive of developing and, uh, supporting local resources. You point out a very good point, a lotta these people that are working for, uh, this company are residents here in Lorraine County, although the company isn't here. Hopefully, we can encourage them to have a, either have bigger presence here, or continue to try to support our locals, uh, to gain some of this business too.
Okay, thank you. And then on C, uh, new rates nineteen fifty per one-way trip, what is that, to Cleveland? I mean, that, that sounds to me a little expensive, but it depends presumably on to where they're going and how do they get back from this one-way trip?
Right, I, I think you're referring to the dial-a-ride, uh, LCT?
Well, let's see, Lorraine County Transit, yes.
The, uh, that's what it cost us, uh, pretty close to what it cost us to go out, to schedule, detail, pick up, uh, and drop off, um, uh, a qualified, uh, recipient of services. Most of these people have, uh, mobility limitation issues, um, and twenty dollars for, for a trip, remember, we may be going out to point A, uh, picking up, uh, a recipient of services, and then driving them twenty-five miles the other way, uh, to their scheduled appointment or, uh, needed place of arrival. So, nineteen fifty's not an excessive amount of money, and mo, a lot of them require assistance, and you can see that the assistant, uh, the person that goes with them is only another dollar, uh, to ride with them. So, it, it's on a, it's on a pretty well close to a break-even point, there, there's not a lot of, uh, markup on that, on that rate.
Well, I guess the reason it caught my attention is I heard from someone in Oberlin who has just recently had to use, had occasion to use a dial-a-ride, just to go up Route fifty-eight to, uh, community hospitals, I believe, or to Alaria and so on. And according to this, then, regardless of where one goes, a dial-a-ride is always nineteen dollars and fifty cents?
No.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, uh, uh, these are, these are, uh, special dial-a-rides. Uh, the, the regular dial-a-ride and, uh, just, and I'm glad you brought this up, just for a point of clarity, uh, we tried to maximize our other dial-a-rides by putting as many riders in the vans as possible, uh, so, it, it sometimes takes a while, and it's frustrating for people because we'll pick multiple people up and drop off, uh, at multiple locations. I believe right now it's four dollars, or four dollars and fifty cents for the regular dial-a-ride, uh, for the general community, uh, which is, which is, uh, uh, still a, uh, a rate representative of the average cost of providing multiple rides in the same van. Uh, but that's one way also.
Thank you for those clarifications.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else? Okay, we're almost at the magic hour. Anybody's watched, say, ten fifteen? Not quite.
Move mine ahead, Commissioner.
Well, go ahead.
Hearing on the proposed annexation of approximately thirteen point forty-eight acres in New Rush Township to the City of Alaria, James N. Taylor is the agent.
The City of Oberlin.
The petition and map are filed in the Board of Commissioners, received by the clerk on March twenty-fourth for proposed regular annexation. Letters were issued to Mark Stewart, Lorraine County Auditor, and Kenneth Carney, Lorraine County Engineer, asking for review and accuracy of the petition and map, and the public hearing was scheduled on this seventy-seventh day, the Resolution zero five two sixty-six on March thirty-first. March twenty-eighth, a letter was received from the County Auditor stating that these two parcels, zero nine zero zero one zero five zero 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 eighteen and zero nine zero zero one zero five zero 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 two are already in the city of Oberlin, the later O-two was annexed to the City of Oberlin, per City of Oberlin ordinance eighty-eight dash sixty-five ACCMS on November second nineteen eighty-eight. This was only two point seven six acres of the land that was annexed in accordance with the Board of Commissioners Resolution eighty-eight dash forty-five on June twenty-eighth. The petitioners are requesting that total thirteen point forty-eight acres be annexed, which would include the left-out strips of road, around the previous annexed part to be included. April fifth, are received a letter from the County Engineer indicating point seventy-nine acres in original lot one oh five and twelve point sixty-nine acres in original lot one oh six, due correctly, accurately filed, the map is in contiguous with the City of Oberlin. March twenty-eighth, received certificate of filing from the County Auditor on the petition. April seventh, received the affidavit on mailing notices. April twenty-second, received certificate of filing from County Auditor on the journalizing. On the twenty-fifth of April, received ordinance number zero five twenty-seven ACCMS, indicating the services to be provided to the City of Oberlin upon annexation. May fourth, received affidavit of public notice in the Chronicle Telegram. And on June sixth two thousand and five, prosecutor's office received a copy of the letter addressed to the City of Oberlin from New Rush Township dated February ninth two thousand and five, stating they oppose this annexation and that there is more viable solution. The trustees suggested the formation of a JED formulated to the needs of Wellington Nursing Home.
Okay. Um, if anyone is going to testify under comment today, we'd ask you to stand and be sworn in by Assistant Prosecutor Jerry Ennis.
Do each of you swear or affirm the testimony you shall give shall be the truth, that you shall answer under God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Mr. Taylor?
Thank you. Commissioner, staff, audience, I'm Jim Taylor from the firm of Taylor, Bruning, and Robinson. I'm also the agent for the petitioners regarding this request for annexation. Just to give you a little clarification of, 'cause there's a lotta initials and names here, to give you a little overview of what's going on, I represent for purposes as agent Doyle and Gail Jones, who are individuals who live on the west side of Route fifty-eight near this project. Um, I'm gonna have Mr. Bruning show you a map, if you don't have your map with you. Uh, what we have here is, south of town is the nursing home, Welcome Nursing Home, that's owned by some entities I'll describe shortly. Uh, they are the ones asking to be annexed, and the nursing home entities that own the property are asking that their properties be annexed. Across, across the street is Mr. and Mrs. Jones's property and property owned by the City of Oberlin. One of the issues that comes up with this new annexation law is there's always an issue regarding the roadway. When, when they annexed into the city, Oberlin and Mr. and Mrs. Jones, the roadway did not go in. Now, when our, our, our properties for the nursing home asks to go in, there's the issue of the roadway, and part of the statute says you can't have a road, an issue with the roadway. So, what we're doing is basically taking all of fifty-eight on both sides, so that from the, basically, the nursing home side all the way to the Jones and Oberlin side, there'll be a straight shot to the end of the Oberlin city limits, and then the City of Oberlin would maintain that roadway. If we didn't include Mr. and Mrs. Jones and Oberlin, half the roadway would be in the City of Oberlin, and the other side of the street, which would be the west side, just that little portion of the street, would be in the township. So, they've been included in here by their agreement, so that we have a continual piece of property touching from, uh, east to west. We also have the touching from the north and south, that's where the property actually touches the city itself, and that's why we've asked for it. The entities that I represent, again, are Gail and, um, Doyle Jones, who are for the road purposes on the west side, uh, the City of Oberlin, again, on the west side, and then WGI Properties LLC is the Welcome Nursing Home family, their children. They formed a limited liability company years ago for the holding of that property. Um, and also, that property, there's two lots in this request of, there's actually thirteen point four eight acres, but approximately twelve, it's the nursing home. The other approximate acre is that roadway strip as it comes down from the Joneses and the city. The other, uh, entity is, uh, DTW LLC, that is the, uh, Mr. Don Wessel and Thea Wessel, that's the mother and father of the children I just described, and again, they are the nursing, they were the original people of the nursing home, they've sort of relinquished or semi-retired, is that a good word, Don? Have turned over the operation to their four, their four children, but some of the real estate holdings are held by the LLC, which the two of them control. So, with that little explanation, what we're asking is that the nursing home right now that exists, Welcome Nursing Home, which is on the southern part of the town, directly across, um, next to their property, they own a twelve-acre parcel. They are planning, and I'm gonna show you the plan shortly, to develop assisted living and unassisted living care facilities to be part of the Welcome Nursing Home corporate entity across the street. They are maximized out on their present land use, uh, they're a nursing home, and I think my client can testify as to how many beds, there's over a hundred beds, over a hundred and eight beds that they have there, and they want, so therefore, to expand beyond just, uh, skilled nursing care to assisted and unassisted living. So, that's what they're doing across the street. Um, I think the technical requirements we've gone through as to the sense of, sense of procedure, I believe they've all been met. Jerry, do you need any testimony additional as to what, that once read into the record?
Um, I believe the clerk has checked through, and the clerk indicate that all those technical requirements have been...
All of them met, yes.
And I would just ask, okay, just ask to take knowledge, and so be repeating everything she said, that we just asked to take now, acknowledgement that they have been. Also, all the people requesting annexation, which is one of the conditions, um, all the property owners rather have signed on the petition. I personally have seen their operating agreements, and the City of Oberlin has gotten council approval, and Mr. and Mrs. Jones have signed off, so one hundred percent of the owners of the property have requested this annexation. Uh, I believe we've all, we've met the technical requirements also, I'm gonna go through a few of those. One of the requirements is Oberlin has agreed to provide services, that's always the big question in annexation. Mr. Rob Dispirito, who is the city manager for the City of Oberlin, is here, he'd like to talk for a few minutes after I'm finished. Um, he's here representing the city, and he's here with Eric Severs, who is the solicitor also for the City of Oberlin. Um, also, we have to show that the territory is not unreasonably large, this is only a approximately thirteen-acre parcel, it's less than one, significantly less than one fraction of percent of the township. And again, the reason of this annexation and versus a JED and some of the things that the CEDs and things you've heard about in the past, which I've been in front of you in the past on, in this case, it doesn't really work here because we're not trying to form a strip center and put in a pizza store or convenient food mart, we're trying to expand an existing facility across the street. Um, we don't think it'd be wise to have employees who work, half the time are doing work in the city and then going over across the street doing work in the township, um, and try to figure out, how do we pay their city income tax, how do we not pay their city income tax, et cetera? And we also want to have these services. Right now, Rush, New Rush Township can't provide us sewer, water, et cetera, that we, we get water from real water, I shouldn't say that, they can't provide us the sewer and the necessities that we'd have to construct the facility, and I'm gonna have Jill Heron, who is one of the, uh, she's the administrator basically now at the nursing home, explain exactly what they're going to do out there, so you can see what type of job creation we're going to have, what kind of tax additions we're gonna have to the community, because this project that they're doing is gonna be a significant dollar contribution. So, uh, we don't believe that a thirteen point four eight piece is exceptionally large, I've been in front of the body with other pieces of that size or larger, um, and I think there's case law statutes that say that this is not an unreasonably large piece. And again, it makes sense to have this connection between the nursing home, so their whole operation can be operated under one roof in one city with the same services and same tax base, et cetera. Um, on balance, the main thing we need to show to you today, that the general good of the territory proposed to be annexed will be served, and the benefits to surrounding area will outweigh the detriments to the territory to be annexed and the surrounding area. Um, again, I'm gonna have Jill testify shortly as to the size of this project, the dollar amount of this project, but the benefits to the City of Oberlin and to this property are huge, and we're gonna be able to have a new job creation, we're gonna have, uh, again, large buildings, we're gonna have expansion of industry in Lorraine County, which we think is important. Uh, the detriment, I guess, is to the township in the sense they do lose a small piece of land. Right now, that land is just basically used as a parking lot, it's not a huge tax base. There are two homes on the property, one is, uh, one fam, the family owns them, um, one lives in one of the homes and she is, knows she's going to be moving, I told her she could probably get a discount into the nursing home we're building, but she's a little young for that, so, she will lose her home in this project. The other home is gonna stay standing at this point, um, it's not used now, it's gonna be used more like a reception center, people who wanna come and meet and talk about the assisted and unassisted living facilities, a reception area, et cetera, those are the preliminary plans for it. So, there's only really one home that's going to come down, there's not a huge tax base to the township, there's not a lotta jobs, in fact, there's really no jobs right now in that part of the township on that twelve to thirteen-acre piece. So, I think the benefit to this area is vastly served, the detriment is, is very, very, very minimal. Any questions of me before I would go forward?
No.
Um, Rob, what, where do you, where do you, I want, I want Rob to have Rob step forward. Rob, could you just tell the panel your name and your position, and maybe your address also for the record?
Okay. Um, Rob Dispirito, City Manager, Oberlin, two oh five Morgan Street in Oberlin.
Okay, and your title, you're City Manager?
City Manager.
Okay, and you're aware of this project?
Yes.
You've had conversations with the Welcome Nursing Home family?
Uh, several.
Okay, and the city is willing to provide the services?
Yes, we are.
And you believe this is a good addition to the City of Oberlin?
Very much so.
Okay, and do you believe it'd be difficult to have, if it's in the township, to try to work it back and forth? At this point, if it's one entity, it'd be difficult to be in the township and the city at the same time?
That's correct.
Okay, do you have any comments you'd like to make to the Commissioners?
Well, first of all, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to, uh, appear before you. Uh, City Council and the administration, uh, consider Welcome Nursing Home to be a very longstanding, successful, and extremely valuable part of our community. We're very excited about this opportunity to expand, uh, for, for them, uh, the services to the community at large, uh, the job generation, the tax generation, and, uh, primarily just the expansion of the quality care that they do provide. Uh, we're, we're very happy about that, and thus, we are very much in support of the annexation request that was, be necessary to accomplish that expansion. On April eighteenth of this year, City Council unanimously approved an ordinance that attested to the city's, uh, willingness and ability to provide the necessary utilities to serve this expanded, uh, proposed expanded portion of the city. Uh, so with that, I would be glad to answer any questions, but otherwise, uh, we do stand very much in support.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Jill, would you state your name and your address and your position with Welcome Nursing Home?
Yeah, my name is Jill Wessel-Heron. I'm the administrator at Welcome Nursing Home and owner. Also, I am currently living in Vermillion, Ohio, 6799 Cliffside Drive.
Okay. Besides being the administrator of the nursing home, you're one of the principals in one of the limited liability companies that owns the land across the street that we wish to annex?
That's correct.
That's a limited part, I'm sorry, a LLC, limited liability company with your siblings?
Yes, three sisters.
And there's also a second piece that's owned by an LLC that the principals are your parents?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to have Eric put up for the commissioners, just in that showing of what we're actually going to... Why don't you go up there close to America, because it might be close. Why don't you tell them exactly what you're going to be putting up, Jill, for the...
Well, currently, Welcome Nursing Home is a hundred and eight-bed skilled nursing facility, Medicare and Medicaid-approved. We have learned over a number of years that we were servicing many people that needed long-term care in a nursing home environment, that there was a large population of people that didn't quite need nursing home placement. So we have continued to look into the development of assisted living and independent living. We've been working with a development company out of Springfield, Ohio, that has a lot of experience with assisted living. And through a feasibility study and lots of meetings developmentally, we have come up with an assisted living that would accommodate twenty-six to twenty-eight residents with a focus on assisted living in Alzheimer's or memory dementia, as well as frail elderly with the ability to divide those separately, so that people that are on the memory deficit side don't necessarily have to intermingle with those people that are just frail and not able to take care of themselves independently. Kind of a surprise through our feasibility study was that there was a need for more independent housing, for not congregate living, but more independent cottage-style houses. And so the proposal that Eric was showing you shows about fifty-one independent units. We're looking at duplexes and triplexes to accommodate some single-family homes, but not very many of those. So I really believe that there is a need out there, that at this present time, we're only providing services to one side of the long-term care continuum, and would like to expand our services to the Oberlin community as well as the greater Lorain County.
And this is going to be done in phases, is that correct?
It will be done in phases. The assisted living will go up as one building with the potential of a third wing, but we're not sure about that. And then the independent cottages will be built over a period of time as there is interest and as people decide to move into those.
And we talked about, when completed, the estimated cost is going to be, expenditures will be approximately, with the land, approximately four point eight million dollars?
Correct.
Okay. In addition to that, how many people do you presently employ?
We currently employ a hundred and seventy part-time and full-time employees.
And as a result of this, if this goes through, the annexation is allowed, and the construction starts, approximately, how many employees would be in phase in over the time while this project is being completed?
I would say approximately twenty-five.
In addition to what you presently have?
Correct.
Okay. And to do this project, do you need services that the city of Oberlin can provide you?
Yes, absolutely.
Can New Rush Township at this time provide you the services?
No, they cannot.
And do you believe, again, I ask this question, your nursing home is a corporate entity?
Yes.
It pays employment tax, et cetera?
Absolutely.
And if you don't have the annexation, you have employees working in a township where there aren't city taxes, there are employees in the city who have city taxes, can your employees be going back and forth? And that would make it very difficult for you to try to ascertain how to do their tax payroll, et cetera?
That would be a challenge.
Okay. And do you believe that this parcel is unreasonably large?
No, no.
Okay. And how long has the nursing home been in existence in the city of Oberlin?
We're celebrating our sixtieth anniversary this year.
Okay. Is this project, this annexation and the project to go with it, is it necessary for the growth to continue for your nursing home?
Yes.
Do you see it as a benefit for you and for the county and for the city of Oberlin?
Without a doubt.
No further questions? I said, no further questions unless the panel would have questions?
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Don, why don't you just come up? Don, and your address and...
Don Wessel, 326 West Lorain Street, Oberlin, Ohio.
Okay, and you're familiar with this project?
Yes, I am.
I think we can deduce who you are, but could you tell the panel who you are?
I am partnership owner of the DTW LLC, which owns 473 South Main, or the part of the parcel on Hamilton Street.
Okay, there's two parcels. And the children's LLC owns one, and they control, and the parent LLC owns the other parcel.
That's correct.
And the information that your daughter gave, was that correct regarding the job creation, et cetera?
Yes, it was.
And the project cost, et cetera?
Yes.
Have you been involved in this project?
Yes, I've been in all the meetings, and yes.
Do you believe this is beneficial for you as the landowner, for the city, and for the county?
Yes, it's vital for the continuous growth of long-term care in Oberlin and serving the public.
Do you see any detriment, other than the fact that obviously township will lose a little piece of property, that benefit will far outweigh the detriment?
Yes, it definitely will.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wessel. No, no questions.
With that, I think all the conditions that we're supposed to address, I think have been talked about, the procedural issues we've talked about and have been met. I don't believe anything else. Unless, Jerry, you'd like something?
No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Severs have comments?
No.
Okay. Well, it says, "Ask the attorneys for comments," so I just want to acknowledge the fact that you're here.
And I will say, we did go, before we start the project, as a professional courtesy, we did go to the township, told them what we were doing, explained the circumstances. We know they did write the letter. I do not believe, has anybody here from town, Jill?
They did write a letter?
They did write a letter, asking to try to do it under a CED, although no one contacted our firm directly. And again, we did make the professional courtesy before we even started this project, to tell them exactly what we were doing. They're familiar with the trustees, know Don and his family, et cetera. And though I think all townships don't like to lose land, I assume they're not here. I can't speak for them, but hopefully it's because they know this is a viable project for the county.
Having made that observation, is there any representative here from New Rush Township who would wish to speak to this issue? Okay. Is there any other city official who would like to make comments? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this annexation? And is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this annexation? Okay, that's my checklist. So I guess everybody who has spoken has made a comment. Okay. Commissioners, do you have comments, questions?
Only, why is it not possible to do a JED agreement, only because of the taxes for the employees?
Well, I mean, it would make, that would be the main issue, plus the time. That would be something between the city and the township, which could take six months, a year, et cetera. We've literally had consultants, the plans, everything ready to go. They may not ever be able to work out a JED. Some people have, they've done it successfully in an Alaria township. But if we had to wait a year or two, or maybe six months, I'm not sure what it would take, it would delay our project. But the other reason, we did want to bring that up, it would be confusing for us to figure out, when our maintenance crew works on one side of the street and then works on the other stride, when our nursing staff goes both ways. Services, we'd end up having services, different sets of services, from tax purposes, trying to pay this bill to this city, this bill to that city. Fire protection becomes an issue. Now, if something happens, if we get the annexation in the project, the fire department will come. If, in theory, we have a fire on one side or a theft on one side, or we might have to call the sheriff on one side, the police on the other side. It just doesn't make sense when we're doing a project that's a central project for one entity. Again, we're not putting a strip mall with Pizza Huts and those type of things in there.
Perhaps the city of Oberlin would be amenable to a JED in some other area in the future?
Well, doesn't Oberlin already have a JED agreement with Pittsfield also Township? I mean, so it's not unusual for Oberlin to enter into a JED agreement with a township?
Right. I was involved in the annexation, where we just did the one for the property on the southwest corner, and there was already an agreement. That was something actually done before the new annexation law went into effect, approximately ten years ago. They were wise enough, between them, to work out an arrangement as the land was going to be absorbed or developed, and they have worked that out in the past. It doesn't relate to this project, it's a different township.
Correct. But I mean, they've got the, they've done that before, so it's not something that Oberlin wouldn't work with the township if anything else came up.
Right. Rob could speak to that, but he's nodding yes.
Yes, it does.
Was it original?
They were out in front of that issue.
They were pioneers.
Sorry, Hal.
I think they were the pioneers.
Right. They were. Rob, you guys were way out in front of the JED war, right, with that issue with Oberlin? I mean, that was something that was similar to what was eventually proposed to do JEDs, but they did that on their own, I believe.
Approximately 1991, the city had negotiated and has entered into an agreement, which still is operative with Pittsfield Township. It's technically an annexation agreement, but it does have a revenue component to it. So it was a sort of precursor to what would now be known as a JED. I don't think even that term was used in ninety-one. But in essence, it does provide for some, in return for a willingness to not oppose annexations, the township does share in some revenues when development occurs within the defined district. So, yes, we have entered into agreements that are in the same spirit as that, and we would always keep an open mind and look for appropriate opportunities in the future for JEDs with Pittsfield or New Rush Township.
I have a couple of questions, and Rob, probably you best to address this. It was said in the comments that rural water would be the supplier here. Is that correct?
No.
No, actually, if we had kept it in two thoughts, we'd have two separate spots. Rural, I at first said we wouldn't have services like water. We do have services for water here. Unless, for some reason, we're in their territory, the city of Oberlin would take over, and thus, rural water already has a contract to supply there, then we would use the rural water contract for that portion.
The rural water's pretty aggressive in maintaining their territory.
That's correct.
So, does a part of that possible lay in rural waters, or any rural waters' planning area?
I won't venture to speak for them, but I will say it's a fact that they don't have a line there. And we do, and we've had a line there for many decades.
Okay, so then it appears that the city of Oberlin will be servicing that water. Now, my next question is, if this annexation is approved, do we need to address the facility planning area for sanitary sewers as well? Because, and the reason I'm asking this is because we approved an annexation for Graft and Township slash Village a couple weeks ago, and no one asked us to approve the facility planning area change. And then it had to go to NOACA to be changed off. We're going to do this today. It is a two-step process. We might as well include it. And that was my question.
To my knowledge, and I'll defer to Mr. Severs if I'm wrong, but I do not believe this requires an amendment to the facility planning area. This area that's being proposed for the annexation is fully within the existing and longstanding facility planning area.
Of Oberlin.
It's not on Oberlin.
Okay.
Yes.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? As much as I dislike annexation, I'll move for approval, based on the technical requirements having been fulfilled, 100% of the owners having requested the annexation, the fact that this is for an existing viable business, and the jobs that they're going to bring to our county, not alone the city, but the county, and the services that they're going to provide through this annexation.
And as much as I dislike annexations, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair? Aye. Skakowski? Aye. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I wouldn't do that.
Off the record, Adam Sandler called me. He would like to take the spot of Mr. Ennis in that production.
I love Adam Sandler.
Thank you for your attendance this morning. And we'll be going to executive session for the purposes outlined by the administrator.
Second.
Ms. Blair? Aye. Skakowski? Aye. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.